Hi, how are you? Good to see you. Hi, how are you? It's so nice to see you. Yes. Pretty cool. Thank you. How are you doing? Good. School's off today. It's incredible, isn't it? What's going on in this situation? Really are. Oh, they are. Yes. Yes. Get that shot in the yard, right? My gosh. Yeah. Yes, yes. Oh. Wow. So, something odd, but you know, you're always very brave and you have to do things. So, I'm excited. I was in the other room. He has no money for all that. And so... I haven't been to him. I haven't been to him this. No. Talking about having a she, it's sad. Yeah. To go. So, he's got a class. And so... Very loving. You're so wonderful. Thank you. I love seeing you. Oh, boy! Yeah, yeah. Sounds good. I just want something that's left to be done. That is not good. Let's see June. Oh, June, you got it! Oh! I'm here, I'm here!
Hey, good evening and welcome to the KCPS Board of Directors meeting for September 8th, 2021. We'll call this meeting to order now. And June, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Barca? Okay, I barely heard him say "here." Thanks, guys. Ms. Buckner?
Here.
Ms. Cortez? Ms. Ford? She is here. Dr. Jones?
Present.
Ms. Wolfsey?
Yeah.
Mr. Hogan?
Here, thank you. All right, is there a motion to approve the agenda as stated?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. June, will you call the roll?
Mr. Barca?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner? Ms. Ford? Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsey?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes, thank you. The motion passes. All right, well with that being said, we'll turn it over to you, Dr. Bedell, for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to start off by saying good evening to all of our guests who are here today. This is one of the board meetings that we truly enjoy, which is around recognitions, being able to recognize our scholar superstars, terrific teammates, outstanding champion, outstanding administrators and community champions. Many of these individuals are well deserved for the acknowledgement tonight in front of this board and the public. We'll get started first with our video highlight, which will highlight our Summer Fest event. Thank you, Ms. Waichu. And I know for those of us, many people participated in that day. It was just great having an opportunity to talk to parents. Many parents excited about school opening up. And then many of our partners, of which a good number of them will be recognized tonight for their work in helping us with the various needs. So, we are ready to move on to the second part of our agenda, Scholar Superstars. And I will pass that over to Ms. Waichu to take us through these next couple of areas.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Bedell and Board. This is one of our favorite parts of Board meetings. We get to see students and recognize students and teammates and administrators and partners for KCPS. We are going to start, I have lots of folders here. We're going to start with our students, our scholar superstars. And tonight has a theme. We had Summer Fest as our video. We're going to have lots of terrific teammates and administrators and partners that we highlight from Summer Fest and that event. But our AP Scholars tonight, our scholar superstars are very special this evening. And I wanted to take a moment to read to you why they're so special. We received information this summer on our AP Scholars and the number of students who qualified as AP Scholars this year. We are going to recognize students who earn the AP Scholar Awards. There are 60 qualifying scores so far this school year. We had a total of 51 qualifying scores last year. Of that, six of the qualifying scores came from East High School. Six of the qualifying scores came from Paseo Academy. And the other 48 qualifying scores came from Lincoln Prep. Forty-eight unique students are responsible for the 60 qualifying scores. Several students have two or more qualifying scores. This is amazing. So with that, we have seven students recognizing personally individually who have the top AP Scholar Awards this school year. And with that, Kyle, if we can advance the slides, unless I need to do that myself. Here we go. Got it. All right, scholar superstars. Jafar Alhassan from Lincoln College Prep Academy. All right, Jafar, come here. We're going to give you a certificate and then we're going to take a photo. So, Dr. Bedell and Mr. Hogan, if you guys will come down too, we'll take a quick photo. Let me give you this. Let me find you. There you go, sir. And Ms. Foster is here. Come on up, Ms. Foster. Camille, will you do photos, please? So, Jafar, we'll have you stand with Mr. Hogan and Dr. Bedell right here, Ms. Foster. And we're going to take a photo right up here. And then if you have any family who want to take a photo, you guys are welcome to come up for your photo. We love when families get to take photos as well. All right. Yay! All right. Thank you all. All right, next, Jafar, congratulations. Next, we have Gohan Galardo Mesa. And Gohan is special because this is the first student from East High School to be named an AP Scholar. And Gohan graduated last year. So, Mr. Hinaosa, do you want to come up for an official picture for his award and then we'll send it to him? All right. Mr. Hinaosa, do you know where he went to school? I'm putting you on the spot. Mexico, okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Hinaosa. All right, our next scholar superstar is Jonathan Hela Hasi. And is Jonathan here this evening? Jonathan! Jonathan's here! One of the special notes about Jonathan's score, Jonathan is the first student in KCPS history to earn the AP Scholar with honors. Congratulations, Jonathan. Jonathan, what's your, what is your plan for next year? Did you say Harvard or Stanford? All right. Harvard or Stanford, let's do this! Congratulations! All right. Congratulations. All right, Harvard or Stanford, here he comes. Next, we have Zara Hassan, and I know that she's here. Come on up. Zara, congratulations. All right, we got a photo here and then... What are your college plans next year? Do you know yet? Medicine at UMKC. All right, let's go. We need you, we need you! Congratulations. And next, we have Kevin Wang. And I don't believe Kevin is here. Oh, Kevin is here, he made it! Come on up, Kevin! We were told that Kevin might have too much homework this evening to make it, but we're glad you're here. What's special also about Kevin is he's the first student in KCPS history to earn the prestigious AP Scholar with Distinction. This award... Kevin's award is the top recognition a student can receive from the College Board. So, big deal, Kevin. Congratulations. Congratulations, Kevin. Oh, no! Yeah. Kevin, congra... Congra... Congratulations, Kevin. All right, and that completes... Oh, no, we have Melissa, I'm sorry. Okay, our next KC Scholar Superstar is Melissa Martinez Diaz from Lincoln College Prep. Is this mom? Get up there, mom. Congratulations, Melissa! Mercy Namazoo, congratulations, Melissa. All right, and then Scholar Superstar, Indigo Nelson Frye. I don't think that Indigo's here. Congratulations to Indigo again from Lincoln College Prep on her AP Scholar Award. And then we're going to move to terrific teammates. So, I think you two are done for just a second, because this is a virtual portion. So, one of the things that we talked about is Summer Fest being a theme this year for our terrific teammates. And Kyle and Zell, I believe you have our terrific teammates via video conference. The terrific teammates we want to celebrate today are the custodial team at East High School. They went above and beyond to support the Summer Fest event that we had as a drive-through event at East High School. These custodial team members work typically in the evenings, and so they are currently at work, which is why they're not here in person. But our technology team and then Lizelle did a great job. You can then set up to join us via video conference tonight. And I see them in a group. Here they are. Hi, guys! We see you! They had their T-shirts on that says "Stay Calm" or "Keep Calm and Call the Custodian." So, this is what we do. We keep calm and call the custodians. So, our terrific teammates this month are Tanya Johnson from East High School. And let's go see if we can get him up here on the screen and say hello.
Oh, there we go. Hey!
Hey! Yay, hi, everybody!
Can you guys hear us?
We can hear you! Keep calm and call the custodian! So, we have Tanya Johnson, Frederick Sonier, Yeneo Wella, Armaretto Talia, Shaker Alaski... I'm going fast. Christopher White, Pamela Chisholm and Demael Gadson from Manual Tech. Hi, guys! Congratulations! Anything you'd like to say on behalf of the terrific teammates of KCPS? Not so much. So, we have all of your gifts and Mr. Hinaosa is here and he will bring them to you tomorrow. Congratulations, team! We love you! All right. Eventually, we'll all be in person again, right? One day. All right, and our last award, I'm going to flip through these pretty quickly here. Kyle, you're going to have to give me back control over the toggle. There we go. These are all their names. And lastly, we have our outstanding administrator for the evening, and that is Louis Hinaosa. Mr. Hinaosa! So, as we said, Summer Fest is a big undertaking and Mr. Hinaosa was not only there to support Summer Fest, he actually helped hand out backpacks and all around helped coordinate a successful event at his high school. Mr. Hinaosa, congratulations. All right, and next, we have our community champions, for which Ms. Alvarez will come up and speak.
Good evening. As you guys saw in the video, we couldn't have done all that we did with Summer Fest without our community partners. So, tonight, we have two out of three, one couldn't make it, but we want to first honor and congratulate Children's Mercy for her hard work in organizing all that she did. I'm going to put my mask on because she'll yell at me, so... Stay safe first, you know? But Margot, you did amazing. We couldn't have done this work without you. You organized all of the Health Partners Zone for us, so congratulations. And this is for you. And then, I don't know if Margot wants to say a few words, but you can if you want.
Thank you all so much. We are so honored at Children's Mercy to receive this award. We have been committed over the past couple of, for a long time, working with the district and have stepped up our commitment over the recent years. And we truly believe that the children you all serve are our children as well. And so, we're very honored by this recognition. Thank you so much.
And then next, we have the Kansas City Health Department, and that team is here tonight. So, if you guys want to come up, they have... If you guys want to get your picture first, I want to... Okay, and they have been helping us at enrollment fairs, at Summer Fest, trying to make sure that our students get their immunizations and our COVID vaccinations. So, thank you, thank you, thank you. And then Jolene, if you want to say something, you can.
I just want to say thank you, guys, for always involving us in whatever activities you have. We've been working with you guys since I've been at the Health Department, and that's been about 14 years. So, thank you again for all you do.
And then we have one more who wasn't able to be here, and that's Samuel Rogers. But once again, we can't do this work without you guys, so we appreciate everything and anything you guys are able to do to support our students and families. That's all I have.
Thank you. I want to, before we move to our next area, I want to thank all of our partners. I want to thank our students back there. You know, I know a number of those students and just proud of you all. I'm proud of our faculty and staff for always going above and beyond. And that will be something that will definitely be discussed tomorrow when we do our State of the Schools Breakfast Gathering tomorrow morning in the Power of Light. And so, I couldn't be any more thankful of these partnerships. You all are making a difference and just trying to help us keep these schools open. You know, and it's hard right now out here with what we're facing, these different variants and all of the quarantine work. It is taxing. So, we would not be in the position that we're in right now without the help of our Health Department, without the help of Children's Mercy, without the help of Samuel Rogers. And I just thank you all and I thank everybody else here today. So, Mr. Chair, that concludes that component. We will move to our workshop presentation. And in this workshop presentation, I know with the board, you know, we've always talked about a template that the board had put together. And I do want the board to know that the district and our team didn't go in a different direction on the template. There are a number of KPIs in a lot of different language with this particular presentation that makes it very difficult to fit into that template. But you will see that throughout this presentation, what is asked for in those templates, that the board wants that information will be received. It just doesn't look the same way, and that's simply because of the way that this presentation presents. We'd have to minimize a number of KPIs in order to do that, and I don't think that is the spirit of which you all would want with this particular presentation. So, I want to, at this time, pass it over and I believe Jordan Gordon and Dr. Collier will help out whenever needed, but Jordan Gordon will take over this workshop presentation.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Bedell, Board Chair, Hogan, Board Members and KCPS Community. I'm extremely excited to be before you this evening as the newly lamented Executive Director of Human Resources. As Dr. Bedell mentioned, we're going to provide a monitoring update for board policy 4.5 and 4.9 with a brief intermission in between for questions at the conclusion of 4.5. Looking at board policy 4.5, Pillar C, which aligns with Strategic Priority 9, that strategic priority is all about capable, empowered leadership. It's our deeply sentimented commitment to ensure that all positions, including superintendent's and other key executive positions, have successors and ready, prepared, capable, empowered leaders to step in in the event of a newly created vacancy or an interim, short-term or long-term status. Furthermore, we've pushed down that commitment to also assure that all of our directors and our principals, all the way down to the school level, have additional leaders that are identified to succeed in the event of an emergency situation. Throughout this presentation, we're going to review the following key performance indicators: the Leadership Succession Depth Chart, which you have in your board packet, our leadership engagement opportunities for KCPS leaders, as well as our Leadership Principal Pipeline Program. Starting with the succession plan, what are the tenets that create the continuity plan to ensure that our leaders are ready and prepared for that next step in their career? Starting with one, the interim continuity. That's extremely important to ensure that we have leaders that are prepared to step up in the emergency situation, be it short-term or long-term. As you see in your board packet, we have two KCPS executives ready and prepared... As you see in your board packet, we have two KCPS executives ready and prepared to step up in the event of their need. Step two is going to be the staff assessment and development. We have multiple key leaders who are being groomed for those next-step leadership opportunities throughout the district, and we're committed to ensuring that those opportunities remain vibrant and accessible for leaders. And then step three is, what are those considerations? When we're considering if and when someone is ready for those next leadership opportunities, these are just a framework of tenants that we use to create our considerations in that journey. As you see here, we have 14 KCPS executive key positions, all of which have identified successors, in some cases, multiple successors, who are ready and prepared to step up to that next step. Our principals, we have a total of 33 principals in total, with a plethora of ready and highly capable assistant principals who are ready, again, to step up should they need to under those emergency circumstances. Along with this is our KCPS Principal Pipeline, which has been a hugely successful program that we've been able to engage and currently have eight residents in. We're going to dive a little deeper into that Principal Pipeline and what that program really means to KCPS and what are some of the great outcomes that come from that here shortly. As we look at the school leadership data, this shows a three-year retention model of all of our separations, our promotions, and our returns from school year 19 through school year 21. I'd like to draw your attention to the bottom half where we look at those retention rates for those subsequent three years. As you see, we started off at 77%, and the miraculous and very proud statement is that we've been able to hold firm at that 86% mark. Given all of the volatility and all the changes that we've encountered over the last year and a half or so, we're proud to say that we did not digress in that area of retention. Now, what do we do? What are the strategies that we have in place to address and identify and support those leaders to ensure that we're not experiencing high turnover? These are just a snapshot of what those key instruments are in place here at KCPS. The two that I'd like to highlight for you, number one, that KCPS Leadership Meeting. This is a meeting that led by Dr. Bedell, but it creates a space and opportunity for all levels of management, all levels of leadership, from cabinet, executive, directors, as well as manager levels, to come together and discuss what those priorities are, those initiatives, and big blocks. This meeting often takes place nearly weekly, but certainly at a minimum a monthly basis. The other component that we think is highly important to point out is the principal and assistant principal meetings. These meetings are rich in content and opportunities for our school leaderships, our assistant superintendents, to engage with both our principals and our assistant principals. These meetings happen at separate times to ensure that there's adequate building coverage, adequate building leadership in place during these meetings. But most importantly, this is also an opportunity for us to ensure that there's continuity in information, training, and data that is pushed directly from those assistant superintendents down to the principal and both assistant principals. Well, back to that KCPS, KC Plus program. This program is a two-year residency that we have in partnership with UNKC. This is a highly successful, well-received program that we are excited to share. As you see, since its inception in Cohort 1, we've had a great pool of candidates that can use this program as a tool to navigate their instructional leadership pathway. So this is a great program for those high-performing, highly engaged teachers to engage in additional learning opportunities, to move into those instructional coach roles. And additionally, it also creates that administrative pipeline. So again, we're able to engage with our assistant principals and our principals at a high level. As you know, with any great program, we have a robust and high participation create some challenges. Of those challenges that we've seen and reflective in this program is simply drawing you back to that previous side where we see that 86% retention rate continuing to climb every year. There's also, that also represents limited and narrow opportunity for those instructional coaches and those assistant principals to move up. So one of the challenges that we have before us in this program is to continue focusing on a higher and more deepened engagement level for our leaders engaging in this work to ensure that there's some opportunity for them in the future, but also to ensure that they're being highly motivated and encouraged to continue with KCPS while they're in the waiting stage. When we look at the succession pipeline, this is an illustration of what our administrative internal promotion totals look like, looking at it from a three-year lens. On the left side of your screen, you have your promotions from teacher to instructional coach, which is a total of six. In the middle, you have your promotion of assistant principals, two principals. And on that far right, you have your promotion from principal to central office director positions, which total two. Again, this is from a three-year aggregate over the past three years. Next step, so what are our opportunities here when we talk about ensuring that we have a deeply rich and highly successful succession model? On the right, we believe that we've done a really great job of building out what that career path looks like from the educational lens, from that instructional side of the house, that you see from that parent to that teacher to that instructional coach, beyond to that assistant principal. What we want to do is take the tenants of that and the construct of that and begin to create over this next school year an opportunity, and if I can use a lay term, just a career roadmap for any and all of our staff members. So be it regardless of what your position is, we'd like to create an avenue and an illustration for a custodian, a food service worker, anyone who wants to advance within the KCPS system has that firm illustration of what is next in line, what responsibilities are required of you. And in some cases, if you are looking to go into the education side, what do those education requirements look like? What partnerships and what cohorts do we have to bridge those connections for you? But in all in all, just creating a full encompassing avenue for all of our staff to engage in additional professional opportunities as they matriculate the KCPS system. That concludes our 4.5, and this is the opportunity I love the most. Any questions regarding Policy 4.5?
Do you really, though?
I'm leaning into it.
No, you're good. Any questions? I have a few as well. Ms. Buckner?
Hi, how are you?
Well, thank you.
Great. What do you attribute to the jump in the retention from 19 to 20 to 20?
Great question. So in that retention, there are several factors, several layers to that. But one of the things that we really, really pride ourselves is how we've handled from 19 to 20, the additional supports that we put in place to actively engage in professional development, additional opportunities around those support efforts. So as we get into 4.9, where we start to talk about what are our strategies and what are the things that we do to kind of deploy resources to all staff members, especially those that we know are challenged in certain areas? I think that's where we'll see the concrete data around what those specific tasks are, but it'll be in 4.9.
Thank you. And then I guess my second question is around KC Plus. Do we pay for these seats, for KC Plus seats?
I believe so. We pay their salaries.
Okay. So in that retention rate, how many of those principals stay with us?
So to my knowledge, and Dr. Collier, correct me if I'm wrong, all of them have stayed with the exception of one or two? Two in total. And again, that breeds back to those growth opportunities, ensuring that while we have a high retention rate, we still keep a high-level engagement and connection with those staff, so they don't leave us for those new button opportunities outside of KCPS.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Ford?
The slide that we just got off of, it said Program Path 1. Are we referring to KC Plus on that slide? Is that referring to something else?
Program Path, oh, so that's really our internal timeline. So those are the pathways and the strategies that we're going to use to engage and frame out this work to ensure that we're encompassing all positions throughout the district. So for establishing one, we need to take all of the positions that we have and then work with those leaders to define what are the potential avenues for them to matriculate through. And then two would be that program review in terms of establishing what does that need to look like for the individual?
Got it, got it.
Ms. Ford, the ultimate goal is to have this mapped out, that if you decide you want to start off as a parent or wherever you want to start in the organization. I started off as a substitute teacher in 1999, that if you want to be a superintendent, here's the route that you take to get there.
And then, in what ways is equity showing up in how individuals access professional development?
So that's another great question, Ms. Ford. I think that it's, again, multi-layered. But one of the things that I think we can do a better job in is streamlining that communication. What are those opportunities? What are those access points for staff? While we know by and large our certified staff, the teachers and instructional coaches, we do a great job of disseminating that information and those opportunities to them, but trying to find that connection point for all of our staff as well.
Ms. Wolfsey?
I think it was, thank you for the presentation, I think it was just in your answer now that something dawned on me. So, you know, that assumes somebody knows that they want to move up. I have observed, just in the years that I've been in the district, many people who, actually, I think would be encouraged to move and to make that next step would make excellent, you know, next people, like teachers, I've noticed. How do we internally maybe help identify people that we think want to, we should, that we want to encourage to continue to move and up within our system?
Yeah, great question, Ms. Wolfsey. So my philosophy is that we have to first establish that baseline, working with the current leaders who are leading the workforce, working directly hand-in-hand with the different respective teams, and getting them to engage with their staff about not just potential, but also performance. Where do we see those disconnects? Where do we see those strengths at? And then understanding that how critical it is as a part of succession at 4.5 of having a pool of high-performing or high-potential staff clearly identified and differentiated in their work from an opportunity standpoint, from a leadership development standpoint, and sometimes just having those late conversations around, hey, you're really good at this. What does this look like for you, and have you considered this versus that? But just that localized engagement from the leader directly.
Mr. Barker?
I didn't necessarily raise my hand, but kudos to the work that you're doing. I think this is very important as we try and diversify our recruitment efforts here. This is one of the most important, I think, we can do.
Thank you.
Good job thinking on the fly, sir. Dr. Jones?
Yes, thank you for this presentation, and a lot of this is very encouraging. The question I have is, or maybe it's not much of a question, but this makes me think about, it's something I've seen kind of bantered about between teachers and them, is that we don't want to make it look like moving up always equals entering administration. And so this has me thinking about, how do we make sure people see a path to increased income and recognition and visibility even while they remain as a rock star teacher or principal? And not everybody wants to come to, you know?
Absolutely. In any organization, you really need a large base of people who find fulfillment and contentment in the work that they're doing. As you go up to that triangle, the opportunities become fewer and fewer. So again, it's about encouraging and promoting and finding alternative ways to utilize that staff so that they still feel well-supported, well-engaged, and then also, oh, sorry. And then also ensuring that they're, that they are, and then also ensuring that they also know what those avenues are for them as a whole. So again, it's about meeting them where they're at, respecting their roles and their place where they sit, but then ensuring that they feel valued and appreciated in the work that they're doing at the level that they're doing it at.
Ms. Buckner?
One last question about KC Plus. What was the goal upon inception? Like, did we have a goal?
Hold on, Dr. Collier.
So I would actually like to follow up on both questions, so I'll start with yours first, Ms. Buckner. So the idea behind KC Plus, we used to really struggle with making sure that we had leaders that were ready to step into that leadership role, and we would spend so much time trying to search and find a good principal. But this Plus program, it allows us to have people that are in the pipeline, that are being trained to be an instructional leader even before they get to the administration. So that first step of the residency is sort of an instructional coach type of position, and then that person has an opportunity to be a part of those schools' leadership team. They're serving alongside the principal, the vice principal. They're part of walkthroughs. They're part of giving feedback to teachers, also professional development. They're practicing all of those strong instructional leadership qualities that you would want to see. So when we have an opening, we have people then that are ready to step in. And as Mr. Gordon said, one of our problems now is having a place for them to land. So we have really strong people that are being recruited to go through this program, and they're wanting to do it. And we want them to do it because it is a solid preparation program. The problem now is, where will we put them? We don't want to lose them to other places. So we've created a good problem for ourselves, but we no longer have to struggle with a strong leader, looking for a strong leader for a school. For the most part, we're covered. And then I wanted to follow up on the question, Dr. Jones, you asked about pathways for teachers. Teachers not necessarily leaving the classroom, and I think it's an excellent question because we actually had a teacher reach out to me, actually, and said, you know, I'm a really good teacher, but I'm not interested in administration, and I feel like whenever you guys present, you always talk about moving into becoming an assistant principal or a principal. And I don't really want that. I want to stay in my classroom and make an impact. So one of the things that we're working on this year is the teacher-leader position. And this particular teacher who reached out to us actually did this position in another school district that she had come from, I think it was New York. And so she shared that model with us, and so our team started looking at how we can take that model and adapt it here to KCPS. So we have strong teachers that aren't wanting to leave the classroom, but they do have an opportunity to be leaders in their building and to help, not just in their building, but even with teachers across the system.
All right. So I will, because just in the interest of time, I'll move through quickly. Three kudos, one quick question. The first kudo, congratulations on your first presentation as Executive Director of HR. I've long been a fan. I think everyone I talk to is a fan. Excited to see you in this role. It's going to be a brand-new challenge. I'm sure it's going to stretch you in really important ways, and so I have all the faith and confidence that you'll crush it. And so thanks for being really prepared tonight. Another kudo would be, so on the KC Plus program, just looking at your conversion rate, like if this was a sales job, you guys would be making a lot of money, right? Like, seriously, I mean, you go from your first cohort of five, you converted all of them, right? You go to cohort two, you converted four out of the six. Cohort three, five of the eight. I mean, those are really, really good numbers. My question would be, how do you expand the program? It's clearly working, right? It's a great pipeline. How do you go get creative and expand it?
Let me answer that. Part of the problem is, where we run into a lot of issues is we don't tend to have a whole bunch of turnover to move them. If you look at the 86% of retention rates with our building administrators, and generally, that position is kind of preparing them to put them on that path to become an assistant principal, eventually a principal. So the issue is you just don't have, we just don't have the bandwidth because we don't have a lot of turnover right now. And I know a lot of them are waiting, and I remember last year when we went into this pandemic, I shared with this board, you know, we're going to end up losing a lot of people. And I think that played out. There were a lot of key-level people that ended up getting promotions into other school districts, and I'm talking about cabinet-level positions for a number of our people that left because we just don't have a lot of movement right now. So I don't know how we grow it out, because then I think we'll be making these investments, and then all we're doing now is feeding talent, you know, out here to everybody else. We've lost people to competitors. We've groomed them, and then they've gone on to competitors. And I think, given everything that we're going through with Blueprint 2030 right now, Mr. Hogan, that makes it even harder on us.
Yeah, it's a fair point. I just was blown away by the ability to get, you know, people in the door, put them through this program, and then they're seeing success really, really quickly. I guess my last, it's not really a question, it's just another kudos, I guess. I love the idea around, you called it a career roadmap. I've heard it called career mapping, right? Whatever you call it, doesn't matter, really, but being able to create a clear, well-articulated plan for people who are in a position, how they go move and navigate the organization and their professional development and skill-building and all that stuff to another position that's more desirable for them, is, I think, really, really important. And yeah, I think it was Ms. Ford who asked the question around, you just have to ensure the exit. is I think really, really important. And yeah, I think, I think it was Ms. Ford who asked the question around you just have to ensure the equity component, right? And so, but I think that's really good and super excited to see that. And I'll go to Mr. Barca for the final question.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I want to go back to Dr. Vadel's last statement and one that was mentioned before on one of the slides. The, the loss of teachers due to pay, I think is a critical issue. So to Dr. Vadel and maybe for us board members, what can we do to help solve some of that teacher pay issue? And if not us, what can the public do to make sure that teacher pay is one of the highest priorities for us?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll just tell you, I mean, Ms. Wolfsey already talked about our legislative agenda for next year. And I had a chance to speak at an event earlier today and the commissioner was there and, and I did talk to this group about our struggles with being able to keep teachers. We have a significant deficit in this state of Missouri. We have some districts that are fifty-plus teachers down right now. We have some districts that are over a hundred teachers down right now. And it, it makes it even harder on us because our state is not competitive. So from a legislative standpoint, it's got to be more than just KCPS pushing this issue. We've been talking about this for the last five years, that we have to be more competitive. I think as we become more efficient as a school system, that may put us in a better position, and I'm, you know, speaking to Linda here, to be even more competitive as we negotiate and work to do what we can to try to keep teachers here. We, and you'll see this in our report in a few minutes. Remember this, there are districts with fifty-plus vacancies. So when you see our report, these numbers are kind of high for us, but in comparison to where everybody else is, we're actually doing pretty good here despite some of the limitations. So we have to have mobilization of this community to demand better pay for teachers in the state of Missouri. And also to allow for us, and I know my union president is here, he probably won't agree with this, but I think there are some assignments that are inherently more difficult than others. And I think we have to figure out how we can offer competitive pay for people to take on more difficult assignments than others.
Here, here. Okay. Mr. Gordon, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, and you're moving on. You're still here.
We're moving on. I'm still here. So we're going to move right into four point nine, four point nine board policy, four point nine aligns with pillar C, strategic priority number seven, which is all about a talented, dedicated workforce. And this in essence is our commitment to ensure that all the staff, all the teachers that we bring on board are appropriately certified in the content areas that they're teaching, that they also come to us with a high level of organization, instructional competencies, trauma-sensitive skills, cultural and urban setting experience, and who all fundamentally believe that every child has the ability to not only learn, but learn at a high level. So I'm not going to read through all the key performance indicators, but there are seven here. As we go throughout the, the presentation, we'll cover each and every one of them for you. As we talk about the value of a teacher, this is, everything comes back to science and research. What do we know to be true in fact through testimonials and through a lot of data analysis? So keeping with, with some of the information that we had last year, because I still think it's appropriate today. From the Rand Corporation, this quote was indicative of what the value of a teacher is. I'm going to read it. Teachers matter more to student achievement than any other aspect of schooling. Among school-related factors, teachers matter most. When it comes to student performance on reading and math tests, teachers are estimated to have two to three times the effect of any other school factor, including services, facilities, and even leadership. So that just puts in perspective really the value impact and why we're going to spend a lot of time talking about our teachers in this presentation. Looking at our teachers and who they are from an education and certification standpoint, as you see on this slide, fifty-one percent, the lion's share of our teachers hold a bachelor's degree, followed very closely with a master's. As we go down to look at what those certifications look like, we have nine hundred and eighty-three of our teachers who are fully certified in their content area, which translates to a ninety, nearly ninety-one percent fully certified teaching staff. While that exceeds DESI standards, we know that it is our goal to work beyond that and work towards a hundred percent teacher certification. So going one bullet down, you have forty-seven, we currently have forty-seven out-of-state certified teachers processing with DESI. In addition, fifty-one are in renewals or upgrade or reactivations with DESI. It is our goal and we fully anticipate that each and every one of these certifications will pass and they will become a fully certified instructor in front of our students to bring us up to our one hundred percent goal. Looking at our classroom teachers' years of experience in KCPS, this slide provides specific to KCPS. So these are the teachers who have been with us during the, during their, their years of experience in those relative age, tenure brackets. One of the areas I want to draw your attention to is that six-to-ten-year model. So teachers to six-to-ten-year, we've seen a continual increase in their retention with us here at KCPS. We know that's highly significant because six-to-ten years, data research and any teacher you talk to is where those strides begin to take, take form and where teachers feel most confident and competent about the work they're doing. Looking at, looking at total years of experience in the classroom. So this data tells you exactly what the years of experience for each of our teachers as a whole. This is reflective of not only their KCPS time, but also the years of experience that they brought to KCPS working in other, other educational environments. Again, the same, the same rhythm here in that six-to-ten-year, ten-year bracket. We took a little dip in twenty twenty-one, but we certainly overcame and rebounded in the most recent year of twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. When we look at teachers, the teachers that were relegated to just this hire, the teachers we hired specifically for this current school year, this provides an illustration of where those teachers are and what their experience in the profession is. So the sixty-six percent represents that nearly sixty-six, exactly sixty-six percent of our teachers are very new to the profession. This is their first time teaching in a classroom setting. When you look at the thirty-four percent, those are indicators of all of our teachers that we hired this year that came to KCPS with two or more years of experience under their belt. Where do we get our teachers from? We're going to dive deep into our recruiting strategies and what we've done. But this is again, just a depiction of where our greatest partners and our greatest numbers of teachers have, have matriculated from, from the university level. And they're really, really a testament of our vibrant and strong relationships and partnerships with those campuses. The value of a teacher, again, bringing back some research in, into this. As we look at how important diversity is, as we begin to go into what our student body from an ethnicity standpoint comprises of, I want to read this quote to you from Linda Darling-Hammond from the Learning Policy Institute. While white teachers also, I'm sorry, while white students also benefit from learning from teachers of color, the impact is especially significant for students of color who have higher test scores and more likely to graduate high school and more likely to succeed in college when they have had teachers of color who serve as a role model and support their attachment to school and learning. Students with racially diverse teachers also have fewer unexcused absences and are less likely to be chronically absent. And again, this is important from the perspective of we value all of our teachers regardless of their ethnicity. But we know that the science and data is real, that students academically do better and have greater outcomes when they see a reflection from an ethnicity standpoint, and in some cases gender standpoint in, in the classroom. When we look at the student-teacher ethnicity data, on the left, you're going to see that our largest subpopulation are African-American students, followed by our Latinx community. In total, our students of color make up ninety percent of our student population. On the right side, conversely, you see that sixty-two percent are non-teachers of color. This is a tremendous opportunity for us that we're committed to continuing to grow and discussing what strategies we can deploy and how can we engage to further close that gap. Looking at it from a three-year trend data, our students of color and as well as our teachers of color, they've remained pretty constant. As you see, our students of color are still sitting at that ninety percent while our teachers of color are at thirty-eight percent. One, one thing that we want to also look at is what our teachers of color from a percentage standpoint look like in comparison to the state and the national data. So in the state of Missouri, teachers of color represent only six percent of the total teacher population. And from a national lens, it's at twenty-one percent. One thing that we're really excited and, and really happy about is that of the teachers of color that we, of the teachers we've hired this year, fifty-six percent of them were teachers of color in this academic school year. So we're really excited about the growth that we expect to see in that thirty-eight percent as we move ahead. From a teacher retention rate, this provides a three-year data around where our retention rate is. And as you can see, again, more positive trajectory, more positive trends around retention. We're currently sitting at eighty-four percent, which again progresses every year. But when we look at that, that fifteen-point-three percent of teachers who decide to leave through separations, that represents a hundred and seventy-seven teachers. As you see right there in the heart, heart of that page is resignations. That seventy percent, seventy or more percent in teacher resignations. So as we begin to dive into that, it's important for us to understand why teachers are leaving and what are some of the strategies and tools that we're going to use to kind of help reduce those voluntary resignations. So on the left side of your screen, those are really our, our sources, our tools and mechanics that we use to assess this data. Over the past year, we've historically used Acuity HR, which has garnered the exit, exit survey data for us. As well as this year, we are kind of fully deploying our retention coach, who is another added layer of support for our teachers. And he really serves as that personal connection. Where our teachers begin to struggle or where they have difficulties, we bring our retention coach involved and he simply gathers the information and, and brings all the resources back to the table to help those teachers get over those boundstones. One thing I'm really excited about is to talk about Qualtrics. That is our new feedback and workforce evaluation tour, tool. So again, it adds a higher level of personal touch than that post-feedback. At the time of an exit interview, it's really too late. Almost inevitably, there's no coming back. We want to swing the pendulum the other direction. We want to get in front of our, our teachers and our staff in real time. This tool will allow us to not only assess and calibrate in real time what our teachers are experiencing, the challenges that exist within the classroom, but it's very intuitive and easily accessible to all of our staff. And by collecting that data, it allows us to deploy those early interventions to support what work is needed or, or make adjustments from an organizational standpoint when we tend to see the real-time results of maybe some decisions or some initiatives that we're trying to deploy. So we're really excited to begin deploying that in the upcoming year. If you look to the right of this, right of your screen, those are the top reasons that were stated in their proper order as to why teachers choose to separate from KCPS. Number one being that anxiety and mental stress. Number two being that higher salary. The interesting part here is that a recent survey done by DESI around why teachers have separated from the work is also indicative of those, those same top two areas. We know that working in, in an urban environment, in an urban school system, the work is challenging. It's, it's stressful at times, but also when you compound the challenges that have come with the pandemic, it's only further exacerbated those, those sense of, of stress and anxiety. Dr. Whitley and her team has deployed a litany of great resources and strategies to help our teachers and all staff figure out better ways to cope and manage their stress level and anxiety. And as Dr. Vadel just mentioned, salary is a top priority. We want to do all that we can to continually improve those salaries from, from start to finish for, for our teachers. When we move over to teacher vacancies, because as those separations occur, now we have the vacancies. And I'd like to read this quote, I promise it's the last one, but it's again, still very important to the work that we're doing from the Education Commission of the States. Districts across the country are facing severe shortages of teachers, especially in certain subjects, math, science, special education, career and technical education, and bilingual education. And in specific schools, those that are underperforming, those that are serving students in urban or rural areas or low-income communities, and those serving high percentages of students of color. So the, the numbers below really illustrate where our teachers' vacancies have started at the beginning of each school year. We thought it was important here to expand our, our purview here and look at a four-year data because this work has been going on long before COVID started. We have done a tremendous job in ensuring that we have the adequate number of teachers and staff ready, prepared, and engaged for the day one of school. As you see, that unheard of, but really, really great number last year at three teacher vacancies, that just simply doesn't happen in schools, school system, let alone urban school systems. As you look at this school year, we had twelve, twelve vacancies at the start of this school year. And I want to put that into context. What that twelve means for KCPS, that's less than two percent, one and a half percent teacher vacancy rate. When you pit that against the DESI at the state level, their preliminary numbers are showing around the state from a teacher vacancy rate at twenty percent, twenty percent vacancy rate. When you go on a national level and you look according to the Institute of Education Statistics, we're looking at twenty-five percent vacancy rate at the start of school in urban systems nationally. So for KCPS to be at one and a half percent teacher vacancy rate, it's astonishing, but it's also reflective of the concerted effort and commitment that's made, not just by HR and the recruiting team, but also those principals in our buildings who are doing the legwork of actively recruiting and engaging, having those conversations. Our community partners, who we're going to discuss here shortly, and what those, those partnerships have yielded in terms of a high flow of high-quality teachers, but also an important component to this is the teachers that we have in our workforce. We know the best way to combat attrition is through retention. You want to eliminate the recruiting issue, keep the teachers we have. Our work is dedicated and building around a solid model that increases that retention average that you saw from eighty-six. We want to get that over ninety and continue on because this at twelve, at twelve vacancies, at one-point-five percent vacancy rate, while that is astonishing and remarkable and every sentiment of the world when you compare the work that we're doing. But again, it's not doable without a full comprehensive wraparound support of school leaders, administration, line staff, and then the teachers who are doing the work, working in concert to ensure that our kids are supported for the beginning of the year. Moving on, I believe this next slide is where we're going to bring up Ms. Monica Landis. And she is our, our highly qualified and wonderful recruiter who leads the work around recruitment, recruiting and retention.
Good evening. Thank you for inviting us to present on this topic. So as you know, twelve, I own the twelve. It weighed on me so heavily at the start of the school year and even now. You know, instantly thinking of what we need to do to make that not happen again and how we move forward from here. So I wanted to start off by introducing you to my recruiting team. The gentleman flying through the air, that's Richie Cherry. He's our recruitment and retention coach. I always say he's flying through the air and saving everyone that he can save. The gentleman that's jumping out and welcoming everybody, that's Mr. George or Jorge Fuller. He is our newest member. He joined us in July as our recruitment person. So this is a slide that we created last year going into the virtual world. We wanted to find ways that we could share the information about the district in a fun and innovative way. So we created this slide. Everything in this slide is linked to information about the district. For example, if you click on myself or either one of my teammates, you're going to find how to contact us. If you would click on the poster that says hard work pays off, that's actually our salary schedule. And we even utilized the little hand sanitizer, the Purell bottle. That's if you click on that, you'll get our health and benefits package. So we made sure that everything was tagged back to the district and really highlighted all the pieces that we have to share. What we found out from our recruits was that this was something they really engaged in and that they really enjoyed when they were given this slide. So we'll be using that again this year because actually a lot of our fairs are going back to virtual. Thinking about last year, we attended forty-four virtual Thinking about last year, we attended forty-four virtual fairs between the fall and the spring. With that, we really utilized our university partnerships, but also looking at our diversity partnerships as well. We were using the platforms of Handshake, Simplicity, Career Fair Plus, and Zoom. So, my team did an amazing job of having to really step in and learn all these different programs and the formatting and how they worked. We also were very fortunate in that we use not only my team, but we use our teacher recruitment team members to join us. We feel like our recruits do better when they hear from the teachers boots on the ground. They know exactly what it's like to be in a classroom working in our district. We also, of course, always utilize our principals and our vice principals to join us. And then we also try to pull in even our curriculum coordinators. So, we have quite a plethora of employees and, like we said, support that help us in our efforts. Our Experience KCPS was an event that we always hosted annually in person. So, we had to find a way that we continue to do this in the virtual world. We invited our recruits to join us on a Zoom meeting. We had, once again, all the key players there of our teacher, our teacher recruitment team members, our curriculum directors and coordinators, as well as our principals and vice principals. And we broke into little groups. So, if you were a social studies teacher, you got to meet with our social studies coordinator. And we had teachers there that taught social studies. So, we really tried to get specific in how we presented the information to our recruits. With that, then we gave information out to our recruits and then our recruits were able to just really break down and ask us any clarifying questions. And of course, we always started out with our digital recruiting platform piece to share with them. Another recruitment strategy that we know is so important is our key partnerships. So, we utilize our partnerships such as Teach for America and our Kansas City Teacher Residency. I want to talk a little bit about KCTR because this past year, they've actually created a pathway for special education, which for us is huge. We have been able to put eight new residents in our classrooms and one of those will become certified in special education. In speaking with KCTR, we know that we're going to continue along that pathway and find those hard-to-fill areas and work with them for that. The other new, that partnership that I'd like to share is our Teachers Like Me with Dr. Trinity Davis. We're really excited about this partnership. We were able to hire four new teachers coming into our district. Three of those are placed at East and one of those are placed at Lincoln Middle. And as we continue to work with all of our partnerships, the goal will be to continue to increase our hires. So, we've talked about our recruiting strategies, but we all know retention is a big piece of what we're looking at. So, you think about a new teacher coming on board with us and, you know, research shows and we all know that having a strong mentor is what's going to help them stay with our district. Doctor, or excuse me, Becky Nace, the Director of Professional Learning, is actually over the mentoring program, but my team is working very closely with her in this respect. One of the pieces that we noted was that an improvement in the stipend had to be made to help our mentor teachers. So, we increased it from two hundred up to five hundred. We also looked at making our mentors have their professional learning community so they could discuss any issues that might come up and how they could work through it with their mentees. And then, of course, updating the handbook was a piece of it as well. As I shared earlier, I think our biggest piece that we've added in retention, of course, is going to be our recruitment and retention coach. If you haven't met Mr. Cherry yet, I'm, I'm amazed because he is just that dynamic outgoing personality that is perfect for this position. He comes to us as the former counselor for Wheatley Elementary. He comes with a strong social, social and emotional background and he brings that in when he's working with our teachers. Some of the things that he's already been able to do is provide stress management PD, not only for our schools, but also departments in our district. Because we have to think, our custodians, our food service workers, they all need that support as well and we cannot leave them out and forget about them. Richie, when a teacher resigns, he reaches out. He's that first point of contact. He's meeting one-on-one with teachers right now. We know, you know, we're two weeks into the school year and we already know we have teachers that are struggling. So, he's in our buildings and he's meeting with them and he's making that contact piece to help, you know, support them in any way that he can. If you saw any videos from the new teacher bootcamp, you would have noted that Richie was the one that welcomed our new teachers every morning. He was there doing some really fun and innovative games with them to get their energy built up so they could start their day. And then our newest event that we are hosting is our New Teacher Social. We'll be hosting that on September fourteenth, so next Tuesday. We're using main event and independence. We'd love to have the board come out as well as our cabinet members. We know that our teachers need to feel that support from us and that love from us. We also, I mean, we push so much that KCPS is a family and this is the perfect time to show our new teachers that we truly are a family. So, hiring and retaining for that talented, dedicated workforce, of course, is our number one goal. How are we doing that? Well, we know we already have barriers. You know, we know there's a teacher shortage. There's twenty-five percent less students going into educator prep programs across the nation this year. We already know those pieces. We know that having a competitive salary and benefits package is number one, that we have to, we have to do that and we have to provide that. We know these barriers. We know the challenges we face. But what are we doing really to meet and have opportunities for our, for our employees and for our teachers? We're looking at creating those stay interviews. Why do teachers stay with us? Why do employees stay with us? What are they like about Kansas City PS? You know, we always talk about our exit interviews and why they're leaving, but do we ever really dig into why they're staying? And that's really important data that we need to use, especially with our recruiting efforts. We're looking at our interview pro- protocols. Are they equity-based? We're looking at tutoring programs for our teachers that are struggling to pass those certification tests. They're tough and we've got great teachers out there. And after they've had their years of a provisional certification, we have to let them go if they don't pass that. So, we're really trying to build a strong tutoring program to be able to retain those teachers. And then, of course, we've talked about personalizing those staff experiences. When I think about that, I really, you know, like we looked at that career pathway and how we start as a para. Think about we've hired district subs now and we've hired paras. What are we doing to help them be a teacher? If that is their goal, what are we doing? So, we're really looking at how we can personalize those staff experiences. So, I've shared with you some of our recruitment and retention strategies and how we're looking and trying to refine what we're doing. Because as I said before, our number one goal is always going to be to have that talented and dedicated staff for all of our students in KC public schools.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Questions from the board? Ms. Bunker?
Is anyone surprised that I'm going to be asking some questions about this? All right. So, before I say this, I want to, I want to just name that I'm a former teacher. I work in the pipeline program, so I don't want AFT coming after me, okay? But when you, when I'm looking at the KPIs, I'm, I'm wondering about teacher effectiveness. And mind you, I'm not saying like student achievement here, but like, how are we measuring our teacher effectiveness in this? And how, where does this come into play?
So, I think about that like with the evaluation process. And we always, so I have to report core data every year and we look at the levels where our teachers are falling. But more importantly, we're also looking at the feedback they're being given by their administrators. And then are they growing in that respect? Are we looking, you know, from year to year as we watch? I have to input in core data an evaluation, whether they were evaluated that year or not. So, I have that trend data to see, you know, and sometimes it's, it's so fun to watch a teacher that's gone from down here to developing to proficient and now they're, you know, they're at proficient plus or they're knocking on the door. So, I look at those pieces. Something that we do twice a year is we have what we call performance management meetings. And we go in and meet individually with each of our principals and we talk about our, all the teachers in their building. You know, are there any that are struggling? What needs to be put into place to help them grow and get better? And we hold our principals and our team accountable for following through with that so that when we meet again in the spring, we can actually see if there was progress made.
So, when I'm looking, thank you for that. When I'm looking at the, the reasons from, I'm sorry, the, the exit interview reasons, I also think about self-efficacy, teacher self-efficacy. And a lot of pipeline programs are, are looking at how a teacher's belief in themselves to be able to actually do the work. And so, that kind of ties me back to like our, our opportunities, just like measuring that, are we measuring that? And if not, I think that is an opportunity as we see teachers experiencing, experiencing like outrageous stress and anxiety at this time, especially during a pandemic. So, is that being measured at all?
We used to, on our, so on our application system, we used to have what was called an EPI survey. So, teachers would take this, sorry. So, teachers would take this when they applied for a position. What it would show is like their skill, their teaching, and then it showed their attitudinal. According to what we were told, their attitudinal was the piece in the urban core that we really needed to be focusing on because we could work with them on their skills. We could work with them on their teaching progress. What we found was there really was no correlation, especially when into our, going into our performance management meetings. I would map out, when we go into these meetings, I map out, do they have walkthroughs? Do our teachers have walkthroughs? Where are they at on their walkthroughs? I look at their previous evaluation and what they received on that. We look at the feedback that they're receiving. And one of the things we put in was that IP, that EPI score. And what we found was, we could have teachers that were really rocking it, but they didn't really have a great EPI score. And then we had teachers that would maybe really be struggling and they had these great attitudinal scores or great EPI scores. So, in talking with other districts that they were using that same process, we all agreed, we didn't see a correlation. We couldn't find anything that helped us know if a teacher was going to be effective or not. So, we actually have stepped out of that with Talented and no longer, no longer give that out as a requirement to apply for the district.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions, Ms. Bunker, for right now?
I do, but I'm just a minute.
I'll let, okay. I'm, I'm looking down to the other side of the dais. Yes, Ms. Ford?
So, I just had a practical question about the vacancies and how we navigate when we have one at a school. What does that look like at the building level?
So, are you saying what are the principals doing then?
Yeah.
So, if, if it happens at the end, I mean, if we haven't been able to fill it,
Right.
we're getting, we're working with our Kelly subs to get our substitutes in there. We're also looking at, I mean, we're going through and really drilling down all of our applicants to say, do you have a certification in this? Would you be interested in moving into this position? So, right now, I mean, and it's, it's through our substitute pipeline.
Okay. And then my other question is about recruitment. Do we, are we doing any marketing like outside of the state or outside of the region? What does that look like?
We do our marketing. So, of course, we work with our HBCUs across. What we found is that we, we kind of took a step back because when I first came in, I mean, we were like gung-ho. We were all over the place and you can't do that. So, we, we kind of reined it back in and we started really working with specifics. So, like University of Arkansas Pine Bluff, you know, how could we build a strong partnership with UAPB and start to get students to come here from UAPB? We were, we were doing really well and then COVID hit and they actually didn't even have a job fair. And so, it's going to be going back once again and I just feel like, kind of like we're starting over a little bit and having to build that. We use a lot of our alumni from universities that, you know, come from outside of the state. So, we really work with our, our alumni to say, help us get a connection to this university. Help us get in the door.
Thank you.
I have one more question. Do you have, can you just give me a high-level overview of the retention rate by demographic, like?
I don't have the exact numbers, but I will tell you that's something that I've been following the last few years. And what I just shared with Mr. Gordon was that we are retaining more of our teachers of color this year than we have in the past. I apologize, I don't have the specific percentages, but that was a big piece because two years ago, when we pulled the data, I mean, I came unglued. I'm like, oh, my gosh, this, this is who we're losing. You know, we're losing our teachers of color and we're losing them not only to resignations, but looking at our non-renewals. And so, that's when we really went back and tightened our processes on that performance management meetings of how we could really work and, and help our teachers through. So, this year, I, I was very happy to see that our retention rates were much better for our teachers of color.
I would love to see that data.
I, I'll, I'll get it for you.
And then also, I have just questions about the demographics of our mentor teachers.
And I will ask Becky on that. Okay.
All right, Ms. Rabarka?
Yeah, I, I guess my question is around some of the possibilities or some of the investments we're making right now, maybe on the foundational side, to help some of our students through the pipeline process, get to college to be successful as diverse teachers, as we recruit them back. I don't know if the foundation is doing any work there or partnerships are being created with universities to make sure that as we encourage and inspire our students to become teachers, we then help them financially to go to college, recruit them back, and then get them placed and make sure they stay.
Right. So, we're working with Mr. McNeil at Manual Tech with the Grow Your Own program. Something that I'm sure you are all aware of is that the recruitment and retention team has received a one point three million dollar grant from our SFSR funds through DESI. With that, it has to really wrap around recruitment and retention efforts. So, Mr. Gordon and I actually went to a meeting last week and met with the state and met with other educators or other HR personnel across the United, across Missouri to really look at what could we all be doing and what do we need to do. So, thinking about the pipeline, that's a piece of it. Our Grow Your Own program actually gets ten thousand on their own of financial funds to support that. So, the piece that we have talked a lot about is once again, looking at our school employees that have sixty hours of college. How can we help them become, you know, get their bachelor's degree to become certified? Or our teachers or our employees that are maybe certify or have bachelor's degrees, but don't have their certification. So, through this grant, we'll be able to offer opportunities like that.
And Dr. Bedell, I don't know if you, if there's any foundational side of that. I'm sure some of that can come up later, but I just didn't know if there's scholarship opportunities that they can offer directly to the foundation or if there are maybe funders out there who would be interested in doing that type of work for diverse students.
Right. I know that Ms. Quinley and I have talked about that in the past of how we can get our community partners to help support us in those efforts moving forward. Because we all know with a grant, we have the three years and then it's going to run out. So, then how are we going to continue to fund this?
All right, now, Ms. Wolsey.
Thank you. On the new teachers to KCPS slide, where it's showing approximately sixty-six percent of our new teachers are new to the teaching profession, I know that's, you know, it's a large number. How do we ensure equity in placing these new teachers?
Say, say that last part again, I'm sorry.
How does Kansas City Public Schools ensure that we are equitably placing these teachers? And, and I guess my question is really, new teachers, you know, learning, they're in a very much of a learning phase. I mean, I understand that they've got training, but I'm assuming this means new to the teaching profession.
It is.
So, placing them in certain schools to me is something that I, I am concerned about.
Right. So, what our team actually does is really look at what each applicant brings to the table. And when we know we have vacancies, we know that this, this teacher, from what they have on their application, because you have to realize like a lot of it, you know, unless it's a, somebody we recruited and we're aware of, we, we have to look at their application. But looking at that, you can see like from their past experiences, so you know, would they be a strong fit here? Or would they be a better fit here? So, we, our team does a really good job of trying to do that. So we, our team does a really good job of trying to do that. As far as making it so that one school doesn't receive all new teachers, that's really, that's hard to do. But we, we work through the processes of really trying to spread our teachers out and share them with everybody.
As, as a follow-up to that, I think a key piece of data I would be interested in, maybe it's a Friday update, I don't know, but is the percentage of new teachers by school. Because that to me is a very interesting look at how, and when I mean new, I'm being very specific, the new to the teaching profession.
One more.
Aren't you done?
I'm sorry.
I'm just kidding.
So one thing that keeps swirling around in my head is like student outcomes, student outcomes, right? And so I'm looking at this, I, I know how important teachers are, but I'm really interested in data on like how our teachers, like overall, like how our teachers are doing in these buildings, right? So do we have all-star teachers in Lincoln only? Do we, I mean, where, where are they performing on our rubric? I know we have one. So I would love to see that data.
Okay, I can pull that by their evaluation pieces.
All right. Thank you, thank you. This was great, a lot of really good information. Congratulations again, Mr. Gordon. Big shoes to fill, but confident you'll be able to do it. All right, Dr. Bedell?
All right, and I'll head up to the podium to do this last piece under the superintendent's report. All right, I think it's moving now. So we'll go ahead and get started. Mr. Chair, members of the board, thank you for allowing me to give you this opening of schools update. It is something that I do every year. I have my team here prepared to chime in as we go through the presentation. The vast majority of the slides that you will see today will focus on what's happening with COVID and our responses to COVID because that is something that is plaguing our school district and it is hitting us pretty hard, just as it is with many other school districts. You also get several updates in other critical areas. IT, what's happening with food services, how we're moving along with instruction inside of our schools, transportation. And you've already received an update on HR. And then I'll close that out with a few remarks around some of the things that we're looking to do to address some concerns that have been raised by board members around enrollment in IT. I think it's important that I close out with that. So as you can see, we have a data dashboard with COVID-19 that is updated nightly through the previous day. And this is just an example of what we have around where we are in terms of current staff, student counts, attendance mode at each site. We try to provide a lot of clarity to our community and to the media at large. As a school district, we know that these positive cases are something that will continue. I was talking to Dr. Jones and I think our last conversation was around the lambda and it's bypassed the lambda and now it's mu. So I think we both can all agree that we're going to run out of acronyms here for this, these different variations, but this is a reality, we're going to be living with this. And this is what we look like as of cases reported from eight, 17 to eight 30. And remember, this is, comes in two week waves, the data. But 41 positive cases, 58 quarantined, middle and high school buildings, we have 19 and 11. And in our KCPS, which includes administration, 62 positive cases, 70 quarantined. And based on some information that I'm hearing right now, we probably will see, I don't know where Sarah is, a pretty significant increase in a couple of our sites as far as these numbers. So we are prepared to keep you all up to date as we progress through. We learned a lot over the past weekend, not this weekend, but the weekend before. Because we ran into a scenario where it was, that on Friday, a student was presumed positive, school had already ended. And we went through the weekend and there was a lot of concern over at one of our schools around communication. Do I bring my kid into school or not? I haven't heard anything from the school district. And the truth is, we simply don't have the bandwidth. We didn't have the bandwidth at that time to address contact tracing during the weekend. And so there's a couple of things that we learned and I always try to apply a case study analysis on how we can address things right on the fly. School nurse and nurse grimes are the point people for contact tracing for those respective school sites. We've added three staff that are dedicated contact tracers that was added on eight 30 21. We have an on-call contact tracer for weekend case reports. We, we will do everything that we can to complete contact tracing within two business days of a COVID event at the school or work site. So that also will include weekends. We also created this principal toolkit that allows for us to have a very variety of communications. All of that information, notice of isolation, we have notice of potential exposure, courtesy notice of case at the school. So just because we've had cases at schools doesn't necessarily mean that your particular child will be impacted. But it is important that parents know that, hey, we do have a situation at your school. We conducted our contact tracing. If you did not receive a phone call, your child can come to school. And I know in particular in my daughter class, there were a number of kids, because of how we do cohort, cohorting, that ended up going out on quarantine. Unfortunately, my daughter wasn't a part of that group as they went through the contact tracing. So we are going to work and do the best that we can to be very honest about this. And it is a lot of work. These are, this is a flow chart that we've created. This flow chart allows for us to address contact tracing, communication with families and staff. And it's, it's a flow chart that breaks down, you can see the different arrows. And I'm not going to go through all of this because it is available on our website. But we did want to present this to you because this is something that's newly created by Sarah and, and Sarah working with our communications team to put this together. This is just the continuous flow chart that helps educate people on what to look out for. How do you know whether or not you need to be at heightened alert? Or should I relax? We're okay, our kids need to go to school. And so this flow chart is a flow chart that really breaks it down to when you can return to school, when you can't return to school. It defines what close contacts look like, it defines staff, it defines families, return to, to work in school, all of these different things that give you a heads up. And then of course, our notification procedures that we also have shared with you that are in alignment with the health department guidelines and also privacy laws. We talked a lot about testing. As you all know, we were the first school district in the state to take the position that all of our teachers either need to be vaccinated or they need, they will be subjected to testing. Here's where we are at this point. We've made a commitment that as we look at student and staff testing, it's available for all staff and students. Parental consent is needed to participate. We are highly encouraging our parents to take advantage of this if your child is 12 years old and up. Staff not fully vaccinated by September 30th will be required to participate in weekly testing. And that's fully supported not only by this administration, I know by the board, but it's also supported by our union president that, that believes that this is the best approach that we need to take. We've already started testing at eight sites. The remainder of the sites will start on the 13th. So we're right around the corner, I believe that will take place on Monday. So we're going to continue to try to rev up and get as many of our students, families and adults within the organization tested. Students and staff can sign up for weekly screening testing. Those are available through the school. You can check with the school nurse for more information. We also have symptomatic testing available through the school nurse. That is also requires you to sign up for the program. COVID-19 testing, we do provide pool testing and that is set up in 30 schools. It's open to students and staff who sign up for the program. Five to 25 samples are placed together in one tube and sent to a lab for PCR testing. That takes about two days for that to return. I'm not, not an expert in this area, but if you all have questions, my team will come up and talk a little bit more about it if you, if you're not understanding what I'm presenting here. Any, if any samples come back positive, that pool then is retested with an antigen, which is a rapid test to find the positive individual in that pool. If no positive is found with an antigen, antigen test, a PCR test will be performed and all those in, in the pool quarantined until a positive person is identified. So as you can see, we are taking multiple steps to try to be proactive. I do not want to be in a situation as a superintendent where we have to go through what we went through the last 18 months. But it also requires a commitment that people are willing to get tested. And that includes those who are vaccinated. Not just, you know, because we're, just because we're vaccinated doesn't exempt us from these new variants hitting us and, and we're finding ourselves in a situation where we're having to be out. We also offer individual PCR testing in eight schools. Open to students and staff who sign up for the program. Individual PCR test giving, and it takes about one day for results. Both programs offer symptomatic testing, which can be performed by the school nurse. So as you can see, there's a lot on our school nurses. They, you know, they have a lot right now and all of them have been trained, all of them are up to the task. Children's Mercy is available for vaccine clinics at every single one of our high schools. We have vaccine events to be scheduled as requested by school sites. So some schools are having back to school nights and schools, as I've gone and visited, principals have told me that they have already worked to try to get sites set up on their campuses where families can get tested on that night. If they have athletes, they're going to work to try to get those athletes tested. I know Northeast Middle School is a prime example of a school that's been pretty proactive in, in, in doing that. We will continue to work with our school nurses to identify the number of vaccinated schools at the site and then developing educational touchpoints for families and students about safety, efficacy, about vaccine and testing. I'll give you a quick example of a situation. I believe our East High School football team is having to go into quarantine. If all of those students were vaccinated, if, it's my understanding, and Sarah here to validate that, if all of those students are vaccinated, we wouldn't have to go into quarantine based on the close contact situation. So that's the reason why we've been highly encouraging our kids in extracurriculars and athletics that if you want to participate, you have to get vaccinated. It puts us in a whole different situation when you aren't vaccinated. And perhaps this will serve as a lesson, you know, around the urgency that people need to take in this organization. We cannot force students, we cannot force athletes. I've already looked into it legally. Because if it was up to me, extracurricular is optional. If you want to participate in extracurricular activities and you're 12 and up, you need to be tested unless you have a religious or a medical exemption. And I can't do it legally. So we have to do this, otherwise we're going to find ourselves canceling a lot of competitions this school year. And then we talk about the vaccines, the vaccine rates. And Sarah, I know those numbers have changed a little bit as you all have been collecting data. I don't know if you want to come up and share where we are with the, our cards that we've already collected.
Sure, Dr. Bedell, I can, I can tell, I can tell, hello, board. I can tell you that as of today, our all-staff vaccine rate stands at 42.09%. And so, so we are a little bit below what we were just because of numbers, numbers kind of changing as far as employment status of folks and, and then also just, just continuing to collect those cards. I will tell you, we're not done yet. So please give me opportunity this week, we're, we're gathering all that information. And, and as you can imagine, that's a, that's a big data poll for us to, to correlate and put together. But I'm hopeful that next time I get a chance to speak with you and to the community, I'll have a much brighter picture of, of the number of staff that are, that are vaccinated.
Thank you. And so we are still collecting those vaccine cards and I think we will experience a significant increase, especially as we move more into that required testing. We think that those numbers will definitely go up. And honestly, there are vaccine opportunities all over the place in this city. So it's just a matter of people going and getting it. I think we may have also found in some of our research that we have some people that may have taken one, taken one shot, but haven't taken the second shot. So that then will impact this data. We will not be able to reflect that as you being fully vaccinated, you're partially. So we'll continue to encourage vaccine hesitant individuals. Our goal is 80% of staff fully vaccinated by October 31st. So I hope as we continue to update you all, you will see an increase in those numbers. And then this is something that is also on our website, just around our mitigation strategies. The board, you've seen this slide before and I think many of our community members have also seen this slide around just the things that we need to do from a personal standpoint, the things we need to do from a shared responsibility standpoint. And it's something that we continuously utilize to educate our students around our mitigation strategies. So from a child nutrition standpoint, here's where we are. You all know that as a board, you approved an emergency food services contract. I know that you've been seeing on news that there are some districts struggling right now because we all, several districts had food vendors just pulled a rug from under us shortly before school started. We were, we were fortunate with Martin Brothers and I believe that is out of Iowa? Yes. So we were very fortunate that they have been able to fulfill their responsibilities. We have a 90, 99% fill rate. We have this modification of acceptance of food deliveries between midnight and 6:00 AM. We're continuing to fill vacancies and because I, there's also a significant deficit across the country with food services employees, transportation, which you will hear in a few minutes, in addition to custodial services. There are a lot of those positions right now that a lot of school districts are struggling with. And I don't think that our situation is as dire in those areas as other systems. So I'm just looking at our HR person. So we will focus on food safety, we will continue to promote fresh fruits and vegetables, introducing recipe-based menus, because our students always complain. I don't care what school district it is, I've worked in four districts, everybody complains about the food. And we, we just have to figure out how we can offer nutrition and also give them some, some tasty food that they can enjoy. And hopefully, we'll be able to do that with this new vendor and let's see what happens. And then also just continue to create more choices for students and then the focus on student satisfaction. Transportation, this is an Achilles' heel right now. I was just looking at the school district I graduated from and that superintendent is, has put out a plea to the community to help. We had one day where we had 17 routes that didn't run. I think they had 37 that didn't run and they had another nine that quit today. It is, it is just tough right now. And as a superintendent, I, I tell everybody, I don't, you know, I volunteered and said, hey, I'm willing to pick up kids. I'm willing to do whatever it takes. I pick up a kid every single day to help free up a route. And it's therapy for me to talk to this first grader every single day. I look forward to picking him up and, and hopefully get a couple more on, on my route if possible. I think some of the parents are scared, they don't want their kid in the truck with the superintendent. I'm in a district vehicle. But in any event, I, I love it and I have been enjoying Benton and all of his video game things that he does every weekend. But this is where we are. We started off with 144 routes, we had 275 runs. We had a total of 162 drivers who said they would return. We actually had 149 on the first day of school and by the end of week one, we were down 10. We were fully staffed, we were able to run our routes and then as the week went, it just got worse and worse. In order for us to be at full strength, we need 152 drivers. We need 13 more drivers to get to full strength. And so right now, we do, we have asked a lot of parents to help us. A lot of parents are taking their kids to schools. We did ask our parents that have special ed students, exceptional education students to help us. And I am thankful for this community, but we have kids who don't have the ability to have parents to provide transportation to get them to school. And so our team is working diligently right now around route consolidations. And we're gonna look to reduce those routes. I think if you look at this last slide, it was a hundred and forty-four. And Linda, I think we're trying to reduce it down to a hundred and thirteen or fourteen, what was it? Okay, so we've already managed to reduce those routes to a hundred and twenty, which means that that will guarantee us that we can get our buses filled up and be able to ensure some level of confidence that we can pick up more students. And a lot of that is also because there have been parents who have said, hey, I understand what you guys are going through. We'll go ahead and completely opt out and we'll just take our kids to school this year. So that has given us a little bit of relief to help us with that. And I will say this to you, Linda, I have a, a fifth grader. If we need to, if I need to drop her off first and then go and pick up my students, I will do that because they are on different tiers. But just, just know that I think as parents, we all are trying to do our part, those of us that do have the ability. Daily emergency adjustments of bus tier pairings to manage driver call-offs, continuing to hire drivers and offer sign-on and referral bonuses. We're doing everything that we can right now to try to get this transportation piece addressed. We also have worked with KCATAs and Linda doesn't know this yet, but they are willing to provide us with some vans and some smaller buses to help us with our extracurricular needs. As you all know, we purchased five activity buses. We've had to pull those five activity buses and utilize those buses to pick up and drop kids off. We have assistant principals and coaches and different people that are helping us to transport kids home. So KCATAs is willing to support us for extracurricular purposes to give us minivans and smaller buses that we can put at our high schools so that we don't find ourselves in a situation where we have to cancel games because we just don't have the bandwidth right now to get kids to those events. So we'll talk about that later. And then as we move on out of transportation and moving to Infinite Campus, as you all know, Infinite Campus is a conversion, we're going through that right now. No conversion is pretty and I've done this before in HISD, Houston Independent School District. It's a monster and it is just something that we, we're gonna have to continue to work through. But I know that it has also created a significant amount of frustration on the parts of all impacted. We have cleared out our backlog of registrations. We have two new registrations that were submitted, you know, and this was as of Friday. So we, we, we didn't, we didn't update it to reflect today. But we are continuously getting people processing enrolled. At this time, we have twenty-nine hundred eighty-seven total online registrations for this year. We process sixty-two addresses changes through parent portal. We've had four hundred and seventy-three family relationship update requests. And at this point, don't have any pending. We process one hundred and ninety-nine household contact update requests through the parent portal. From an enrollment standpoint, our numbers are sitting around thirteen-four. It varies somewhere in that range in terms of the number of kids that have actually showed up at least one day on our campus. We will have a better count on that when the official count day takes place, which tends to happen during the fourth week of September. So we will continue to monitor that. I mean, the last Wednesday of September, so my apologies. But yeah, so that is where we are right now and we're continuing to monitor those numbers. We've distributed our devices, have been distributed out. Secondary schools were distributed the week before school during back-to-school nights. We've also had follow-up during the first week of school, which was scheduled at each location. Elementary schools were distributed by class, by the classrooms during the first two weeks of school. We'll do follow-ups based on work orders. And then COVID protocol and quarantine students were prioritized for the same-day distribution. Those that were missed were provided to the building administration. We know, given what happened this year, especially at our elementary schools, we found ourselves already having to quarantine kids before we could even get the devices out. And I think next year, we have to figure out, how do we do this sooner before school even starts? Is there a way that we can get device distribution done a lot earlier? So I am charging our IT team with us being more proactive and, and for those kids that we know are enrolled. We're not going to be able to catch everybody, but we don't want to find ourselves in a situation where kids had to quarantine, they didn't have hotspots, or they didn't have devices. That was something that we also learned going through this process. From a school leadership and instructional update, we know that we are one hundred percent in-person. If the whole class needs to quarantine, teacher transitions, all learning to asynchronous distant learning model using Microsoft Teams is the mode that we will go to. If it's individual students, and this is where I think we've had some frustration from parents, students will engage in Google Classroom or Seesaw. And I think that also resulted in them not being able to have some type of touch with their teachers virtually. And that's something that we're looking into right now, early on. We have work packets that contain printable classwork from our district-approved digital resources that will be prepared and sent home with parents. Here's what we're working on right now. Looking at quarantine liaison teachers, which will, and we will be able to assign students that are in quarantine to a great appropriate Kansas City Virtual Academy class and the student will receive the following daily lessons, reading, math, science, and social studies. We have met with quarantine students, this quarantine liaison teachers. We'll meet with them for a daily and virtual instruction. So this is something right now that we're working with, with, through Jennifer's Division. I don't know if you want to chime in on where we are right now with the works of this.
Thank you, Dr. Bedell, you, you covered it in general. So we're working through, we do understand that, you know, last year, Google Classroom and Seesaw worked well for, for us and we're still going to utilize those, we're not moving away. We're just adding an additional touchpoint so that our students are actually seeing our part of live instruction. If they're out fourteen days quarantining, that can be a, a long time for a student not to have any interaction with the teacher. So we're gonna make sure that all of our students will have that interaction. We are kind of vetting out our models. We've, we've spent a lot of time today, Dr. Jones and I, looking at what will be most beneficial for us and how we utilize these quarantine liaison teachers. So we want to make sure they have time with their, with the KCVA teacher, but we also want to make sure that somebody's just checking in on them daily. A quick check-in to see how they're doing, if they need assistance with any of their coursework, because they will still be doing the work that's assigned from their regular classroom in Google and in Seesaw. So we want to make sure that they're not missing out on, on those assignments, but they are still getting live instruction. So we're mapping it out, I think we're close to where we're gonna be on this and we'll be able to share that with you. But we're hoping to start some kind of live instruction for our quarantine students as early as Monday. Because we know that, that, that is a concern and we want to make sure that our students aren't missing out on instruction. We know last year was a tough year for us and I don't know that we can afford to just do what we did last year. It worked well considering our circumstances and the timing that we had. But where we are now, we have to make sure that, that they're getting that live instruction in those critical core areas daily.
So before we move to questions, and I know, I'm looking forward to being able to field as many as I can and test my knowledge here, but our, our team is here. Just a couple of things that I wanted to just address in this meeting. First and foremost, I'm very appreciative of this board and I, and I will tell you, you know, it's, it's been tough. These last eighteen months have been tough on superintendents across this country. And I think, you know, we often find ourselves in a no-win situation, right? We're not doing enough of this, or we're doing too much of this, or we made this decision. Fifty percent of people are happy about this, fifty percent of people aren't. It's taxing. And I think it has taken a toll on the superintendency. And also, just when you think about teacher vacancies, when you think about just the toxic stress that people are subjected to. You know, as a school district, we've, we've, we've gone through a lot over these five years trying to move this school district forward and to put it in the best position to even be in the conversation around accreditation. We know right now that it's math growth points that has slowed us up and that's something that we're gonna really be intentional in while also continuing to build up those other subject areas. I understand the frustration of, 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 of many of our board members with what's been happening in enrollment and what's been happening in IT. And I think for me, I take, I take those concerns very seriously. I'm, I'm, I'm like any other person, I'm very competitive, I don't like to lose. I don't like to lose at anything and I think that's probably part of my problem is I'm too competitive. The most important thing is I don't want to let down my board members in, in our performance, you know. And, and right now, we're going through some transition. We've been having issues with enrollment for the last several years and I think that's very valid and I think it's a very fair assessment of the area that we have to work on. We have a new person in there, I'm working with the Council for Great City Schools to work on getting us a mentor that, that really has some strong enrollment background. Also, working with the Council for Great City Schools to try to get an audit. We presented to you all changes that we were making with our enrollment process and I feel like it was a perfect storm with us going through this IT conversion that I feel has hurt us. It has really hurt us from a communication standpoint, from an IT standpoint, right? We are going through this conversion and there are a lot of lessons that I believe are learned from this. As a superintendent, I own where we are with this conversion. I've spoken with John Ruddy, I've spoken with a number of other people that have gone through conversions and everybody will tell you, they're painful. If you go through a student management, a, a student information system or a learning management system transition, it's painful. But our goal is to hope that on the back end of this, we will be better off because of the ease of use of this tool. And for the district that have gone through this transition, Park Hill is one, Ford Osage is another one. I've talked to those superintendents about their frustration when they went through it, but how now it is so much better. Our IT department was receiving a lot of praise prior to us going through this conversion. Our IT department was a department that has been working hard. We have an interim right now and we're working through these adjustments. And I do want to assure this board and this community that we are going to get these issues addressed. We do have an audit scheduled that begins on September, September twenty-sixth. So we've made a lot of changes with IT. We presented a multi-year plan to you all about what we were gonna be doing differently in IT. So we need to have all of this audited to make sure, are we headed in the right direction with what we're doing? Is there, are there experts that can tell us, how are we doing with this conversion right now? Are there missteps? Are there things that we could have done differently? When we get all of that information back, I will be sure to provide an update to you all around those findings of those audits. And I, I am committed to this, right? But I think the, the, the last piece for me that I, I simply ask is, in our frustration, let's just be mindful of how things that are said can make people feel, right? I, I got a lot of senior leaders here and these people have worked hard to get to where they are and to, you know, to, to question salaries and things of that nature publicly. They've worked hard to get here. I tell anybody, if you're a teacher and you want to move into this role, these are the steps. That's what Jordan Gordon is working on. We want to make sure that everybody understands that if you want to be a superintendent, you more than welcome to get there. But with these positions come a lot of stress, a lot of darts and bullets come our way. At the end of the day, it's on me, right? Come after me, not my people. Let, that's my job to come after them, you come after me. You guys, if I'm not doing what I need to do, there's ways we can handle all of this. I am not afraid of accountability. I've been honest with this community on our failures and the things that we've done well. And I don't want this board to ever think that we're not being transparent. And I think that for me, I'm committed to continuing to be that person that will be honest and transparent with you about where we are. Our IT and our enrollment issues, they're real. But we're gonna get through it, we're gonna fix this. And at the end of the day, y'all, just trust me on the fact that, go to our schools. If you haven't had a chance to visit, go see what's happening in our schools, right? Now you will run into some people who may be frustrated because they're learning this, but I promise you, you're gonna see teachers working hard and bussing there behind you, you're gonna see kids excited. And I feel like we've gotten off to a really good start on that side of the house. We got our things we know we have to continue to work on, on this side of the house and I'm committed to that. So I just want to thank you all for your commitment. And honestly, your honesty and your transparency around how you see things and, 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 and that's gonna help us continue to grow, but we just gotta do this together and, and that's the way I see it. So now we will open it up for questions.
All right, thank you, Dr. Bedell. I imagine we have some questions. I'm gonna start with Mr. Barca.
Yeah, I wanna go back to the, well, first, Dr. Bedell, I, I think you're a hundred percent right on, on so many of your points. The team all around has been working incredibly hard and, and deserve that acknowledgement, right? Especially in the wake of COVID and its impact on, on all of the systems, especially those of education. So kudos to everyone for, for all the work they've been doing. But I, I want to ask a question around the transportation component. Is it right to surmise that we are missing drivers and that's causing all the changes in routes and the buses that are going unattended? Is, is that really the critical component there is that we can't, our contractor can't recruit bus drivers?
That is absolutely correct. That is our issue right now, human capital and being able to, to fill those routes fully, correct?
Do we, do we know if, what the pay is for those bus drivers? I'm assuming it's hourly wage?
I'll move over.
Yes, sir, it is an hourly wage and we worked really hard with STA when we entered into this contract, made significant increases and improvement. And we are, they are the, I believe still the best-paying bus company in the metro area. It's about availability, it's not about wage. It's about people interested in coming and doing the work and enough applicants. The work we did today to reduce routes means that the number of drivers we have, those that have stayed with us are adequate to now meet our needs and give us those excesses. So I think we're on the path. We decided not to wait for enough drivers to meet the old route plan, but rather change the route plan to meet the number of drivers we have.
I guess I, I ask that because I'm sure that was negotiated in a time when hourly wage wasn't such a hot commodity given the current circumstance of our economy. And so I, I don't know that I necessarily agree that the wage won't drive more bus drivers being available, but I wonder if there's an opportunity there, right? I mean, if they can go make fifteen dollars an hour starting at McDonald's, is that something that we're competitive with in our market? So that's, that's the reason why I asked that.
Three years ago, our starting wage was eighteen fifty and I know it's improved through their negotiation. So it is, I think it's pretty competitive at this point compared to a lot of other hourly rate positions in the community.
But for something, for a service that we rely so importantly on, I wonder if there's opportunity for more full-time employment options, right? With benefits, and I know this is something that's probably unique when it comes to bus contracts, but the reality is this is not an isolated issue for our district alone and something is gonna have to change in the industry. So I, I, I don't foresee us going away from needing bus drivers next year or the year after. So I, I, I applaud your efforts and your team and STA, but I, I think there's, there has to be a change somewhere and I'm just wanting to explore that opportunity. So I want to transition quickly just to, oh, go ahead, Linda, sorry.
Go ahead, Manny.
Just one final question or I guess concern as we look at using quarantine teachers to potentially backfill some of the online learning needs. What safeguards do we have in place so a, a quarantine teacher who may be developing symptoms and then becomes sick doesn't get overloaded? Or that there's high transition amongst students having multiple teachers because of those circumstances?
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Barca, I don't think that it's a quarantine teacher that we're referring to. We're talking about teachers who will be, that we're, that's the name that we're giving it, teachers who will be supporting students who are quarantined, not a teacher that is quarantined.
Gotcha, sorry for that misunderstanding, thanks for that.
Not a problem at all.
All right, Ms. Cortez.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan. Dr. Bedell, thank you for walking us through so many of those important components of the opening of school and, and, and some of the challenges that we, that we face. I want to focus my question, I've just got a couple of questions. One, I'll start with a comment. You mentioned the, the bringing in an outside organization. at bringing in an outside organization, the, the Council of Great City Schools to audit our enrollment process. One of the things that I'd encourage you from a leadership standpoint to think about would be what internal audit functions or backchecks do we have so that we know if our systems are working the way that we intend them to? Um because I think some of what we've seen with, with Infinite Campus and our communications, um it, it, it seems like we need a better information flow internally about what our public, what our public-facing communications and interactions with our family are so that we know, in fact, that those systems are working. So I don't know if we need to, to also do a dive on kind of those, those in real-time audit functions so that we know that we're, we're communicating uh well with our constituencies. Um just food for thought.
No, thank you.
The second, the second thing I wanted to kind of ask about uh was the staff vaccination rate. And I understand that we're uh diving deeper into that information, and it's at this point incomplete. Um I would ask that, you know, to the extent it's possible, um as you pull, as, as your team is able to pull more of that information together, that it be, that we be able to see with, you know, some categorization, whatever is appropriate within the, the KCPS, so that we have an understanding or we're conversant with regard to our faculty versus our staff, um, you know, and, and how that breaks down. Um I think that would be valuable information from a, from a leadership standpoint.
Ms. Cortez, before you go to your next one, I think we have that. Um do we have, do, have we completed or, like, were we broken it down by school and by division? Because I believe that was a request that we received uh from, from you via email. Um so I just want to make sure we can answer that one.
Yeah, uh Ms. Cortez, I, I will tell you that we are in process of that. I, I can, I can just give you um some uh samples in compiling the, the numbers of vaccinated staff at East and Northeast, East High School and Northeast Middle School. As far as um vaccinated instructional staff, we're looking at sixty-nine percent uh are, are vaccinated versus non-instructional staff of thirty-one percent of those total staffs at East and Northeast Middle School. So we're in process of compiling that information that way. In order to um best facilitate our, our testing process, what we did is we pulled the data by school. So that way we could, since we're setting up at each school site for, for that um, um testing process, that way we, we could, we could know um who's required to test and, and who's not at this time, even though it, you know, of course, it's widely available to everyone. But just, just knowing that, that those that are, are uh choosing to remain unvaccinated at this time have that opportunity to test. So that was our first data poll, and we're, we're launching into the, to the secondary data poll as far as um more of those student-facing uh folks that are, that are interacting, engaging with students that are unvaccinated, and then our support staff.
I appreciate that, and I, you, you were very clear in your presentation that the data is, it, you know, you're still receiving data and it's incomplete, so I, I want to acknowledge that, that you did share that. Um but as, you know, as we move forward, if we can, if we can develop a sense. My second question really is a follow-on to um something that you mentioned in your presentation, but again, just now. Um talk to me, can you share a little bit with us about what we are doing in terms of encouragement? Um how are we encouraging our, our staff? What opportunities are we making available to provide information and education?
So, so where we're headed is, is um uh we wanna, we wanna do uh um some video for staff as, as um pull in our, our docs, as I call them the doctors' gens, it's Dr. Schuster and Dr. Goldman, to help us with some educational material for our staff and, and videos. Um so that way they can pu- pose those questions um as to, as to um what is our barriers for them personally to, to receiving vaccine? And really just encouraging people um uh to speak with their own uh doctors or physicians um rather than uh going to the internet necessarily or friends, and we encourage that for everyone to get, to get that information from their doctor as if they're a good candidate for a vaccine. But as far as that, that global strategy, we're look, we're looking towards um a video or video series or video vignettes uh regarding uh safety and efficacy of vaccine and how important it is to ending pandemic and keeping schools open.
I, I will share with you some information that, that was provided to me by a couple of um senior care facility administrators who I spoke with in the last few weeks about the challenges in, in increasing vaccination rates among their teams, both here in Kansas City and elsewhere. Um the thing, one of, one of, the thing that they found to be the most successful in kind of um moving the needle in du- in terms of double-digit change in vaccination rate was making a human, you know, kind of a trusted expert available for their teams to talk with in person. And I realize that that is a big lift for an organization the size of KCPS. But, you know, kind of on a strategic basis, they really, you know, they said of all of the things that they did to try to provide education and information to their staffs, um in, in four different cases, it was bringing in um, uh in three cases, it was a physician, and a fourth, it was a public health resource to just be there for a, a, you know, a thirty or forty-five minute period to just answer people's questions in person as a, you know, so they could have kind of that human interaction, but also kind of develop at least a modicum of, of trust in the information. So just food for thought.
Thank you.
Ms. Cortez, thank you, and my apologies for cutting you off earlier. I got a little bit excited when you were asking. Cause I, I actually saw an email, and that just got me up. Okay.
Ms. McLeary.
I have, just because of the experience, I ended up being on the block list and this, the communications. I just wanted to make sure that if in the uh, I, it's the slide about Infinite Campus and enrollment, but making sure that those parents, that if you do not believe you are currently receiving anything, what is our plan to try and get them on? And, and for those listening, my example is I blocked myself unknowingly, and I wasn't getting anything until I said something. And so I am, I'm just trying to make sure that if there are other parents in the same situation, what would you have them do?
Sure. So you had a really good uh suggestion in email about sending out communication to those families and looking at the uh responses that they have during registration of wanting to actually get information, right? Not wanting to be a part of that blacklist. So we are actually compiling the two together right now so we can actually contact those families and let them know they were on the blacklist and that we are going to remove them, because part of that is we are not allowed to opt people in and out, uh but we can notify them of that. And so that was a really good suggestion that you had, and so we're actually working on that. Ms. Buckner.
I'm gonna say this, and then I'm gonna knock on wood, but um I'm really concerned about um, not concerned, I'm just wondering about a contingency plan. I have people reaching out to me, asking me at least once a week, like this, this, the COVID is mutating. It's look, it looks different every once, I mean, you know, every week, like what is our threshold? Are we looking at our contingency plan? Like, what does this look like?
Yeah, so we, we do um, you know, have a contingency plan in place. Each of our schools have also submitted their plans around the work that they will be doing as uh kids are being placed out. But also, if we have to close down as a school district, I mean, ultimately, we would have to go back into a similar mode that we were in last year. I mean, that is a, a big reason why we wanted to get all of those devices out and get those hotspots out for families that need it. So I'm, I'm with you, knocking on wood. I don't want to find ourselves in that situation, but, you know, as we think about these variants and look at the uh number of kids that are now having to move more and more into quarantine, um if we find ourselves having to go back into that mode, it will, we will absolutely have, if, it, it, it will be a full-blown virtual mode, just like last year. I think that's where, at least the conversation I've had with all of the other area superintendents, if we are, we find ourselves in that situation, we'll be back in, in the one-hundred percent mode. The other alternative is to do what we did pretty much when we came back in March, which is to be on a hybrid schedule. Um and, and that may reduce the amount of students that are all congregated at one, at any given time. But those are our two options, and we've done both of those, and, and while it creates a lot of inconvenience, we do know how to do that.
So I know before we returned to school, we had a plan, right? We had a, you know, the threshold and all that, so I wonder if we have something in reverse, like um as this is, as this is affecting more and more children, children are being hospitalized, I want, I just, I, I wonder about the planning around this because we learned a lot of lessons, um and there is this big cloud of unknowns. So I would love to see a plan like that, um just something for us to have to hold on to, to follow. Cause I don't want to look up one day and say, you know, oh, we have to close schools all of a sudden, and, you know, it's a, it's a rush process, you know?
That's, that's not a problem. We'll, we'll work as a team um and we'll put that in place. Um so I'm just thinking about timeline to get all of this into you all, cause it's pretty lengthy stuff here that you guys are asking us to.
I, I don't suggest that this is like something at the next board meeting.
Okay, okay.
I, what I'm suggesting is that
We'll work on it.
We have, we have contingency planning and that there is something in the works. Not that we're saying like, you know, we anticipate this happening, but I think the last eighteen months has taught us, like, anything could happen.
I agree with you, and honestly, a lot of those plans are pretty much already on the books, so we just need to kind of revitalize it and just make sure that it's ready to go if we have to launch it, uh so that it shouldn't be difficult to do. Um let me say that.
Ms. Ford?
I have a quick just transportation follow-up question. Um and so the feedback that I think that I have gotten the most about transportation is less about that we have the shortage, like people have an understanding of that being just something that's out of our control, and more about how we're communicating any, any changes or any updates. And so I guess my question is, what does that look, look like for us? If we're doing daily updates of routes and things like that, how are we communicating that information to, to families?
It's a great question, and we've had a few misses in a variety of ways. The volume has been so great.
Yeah.
I apologize. I just put a lifesaver in there.
Sorry.
If you hear me moving it around. Um so the volume has been so great, and unfortunately, the office staff of STA has been out driving buses because they can, and they do that in emergent situations. So we have leaned on and relied on our schools to communicate in the mornings when a route is not going to run. And so they, at six fifteen in the morning, get a list, these are the buses we couldn't run today. And then they communicate directly with their families. There's been a variety of reasons that has not been successful. Um in all cases, we've not had our schools, our Safe Stop app up and running until we got routes settled, which is the best way for parents to know what's going on with their bus. So now that we're at this new place, that daily communication won't be necessary. Number one, we'll have the drivers, and our app will be live next Wednesday so that parents can know where their bus is and the expected arrival time and all of those things. So we've not done a great job of that, but we have a good plan for how we turn that corner.
Dr. Jones?
Oh, sorry. Thank you. I just had a, a question about, um, and I know we've talked a little bit about this, but I just wanted to see where we were with people being able to actually take their kids to class, particularly. I know most schools right now, you can't go in, you know, we drop them off at the door. I just wondered for like new parents, new parents with kids new to our district, was there, in your opening of schools, was there any allowance or combination made for them?
We did, we did. Based on uh that concern that was brought to us in particular, we did allow for parents to uh escort their kids to class. We just said you can't congregate, you walk your kid to class, send them off, and then um come out. So we did, we did address that concern.
Okay, uh it sounds like we have no other questions from other board members. I'm gonna save my questions, cause I think I can just get them from you um at another time. There's nothing super urgent. Um there was one thing uh around, oh, a bit of a kudos um on the nutrition side, because I think that was definitely an area where we were super flexible, and we got dealt a really terrible hand, and we just played it really, really well. And so I was really impressed that we were um able to be really agile um in a time. And it's really cool that the data, so far at least, I know it's just week one, but the data is suggesting that they're delivering well. We're hitting our marks on that stuff, so that's, that's good. Nutrition, I think, is one of those things where it's often undervalued, because you don't think about how important it is and how much of a logistical challenge it can be. But um it's really, really important work, obviously. Um and then I'll close out this section before I move over to the Board of Directors' report and just say, I kind of want to address some of your, your closing comments, Dr. Bedell. Look, it, a person would have had to have not ever listened to me in the last almost three years now to know um or to not know how I feel about you and your team. Um I have a tremendous amount of respect for you. Um I talk about it everywhere I go, um and the accomplishments you've had, right? I mean, I think from an academic perspective, graduation rates, um you've hired some really talented people, right? Your aspirational leader, this community has rallied around you, and it doesn't matter which sector of the community we're talking about. Um I think that's the case um very, very largely. That said, um I have a responsibility, right, and I take it seriously. I'm a fiduciary. So I've got a, I've got a um, a responsibility, a duty of loyalty. I'm very loyal to this district, um its team, and our students. Um and I've got a duty of care, and that duty of care requires me to assess and evaluate the performance of this district, um the superintendent, and um to, to make sure that, that we're doing the right things in the best interest of these kids, and that the district is sustainable, right? So beyond Dr. Bedell, at some point, you're going to go, you know, go away. Um and when you go away, this district should be able to sort of sustain itself, right, regardless of who the new leader is, at least for a period of time. Um in the comments I made uh la- at the last board meeting, was it the last one? I think it was the last board meeting. Um uh were reflective of what I, what I know I heard from this dais from just about every board member, maybe every board member that was here. Dr. Davis happened to be this guy standing at the podium, right? I was not speaking directly to him about this. It was really a message to you that I feel like we've got some systemic problems. It's, it's my job to do that. It's every board member's job to do that, but I do it with the highest regard and respect for you and this district. We have to get better, right? And we know from an enrollment perspective, we're going in the wrong direction, and it's the lifeblood of this organization. And so um I wasn't going after your staff. I would never do that. If you take the entirety of the context of our relationship, you would see that that's not my style. It's not who I am. I told you about my concerns the day before. I'll continue to do that. Um I, I know you're a transparent guy. I know you're a guy who likes and wants accountability. I know that you always step up to the, to the plate and, and try to hit a homerun a hundred percent of the time. So I just wanted to provide clarity, because I don't want your team, right, um to walk away feeling like I was throwing darts. It's, again, it's not my style. It's not what I was trying to do. It was trying to send a message that we've got to get better. We struggle operationally. I think it revealed itself in a really, really bad way the first couple of weeks of school. And so um hopefully, we'll continue to do that. Um I know that you, you and everyone in, in this organization will continue to work on it, but I thought it was important to give my thoughts as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
With that being said, um June, will you take us through a review of the old action items, including everything that's still outstanding?
So we had four action items that came in from the um, the last board meeting, the August twenty-sixth. They were directed to Ms. Waichel, um and related to the Amanda Holensworth, Holdsworth, my apologies, Holdsworth presentation. Um in all four of these items, uh they are posted on the Simply website. The answers were given and were presented in the Friday update. That um Friday update, I've extracted those answers and put them on the website so that if anyone wants to see them, they can be seen on the website. We did have
Sorry, just for clarity then, those are no longer outstanding, correct?
They're no longer outstanding.
Okay, great, thanks.
Then we have one outstanding, which is the Board of Directors would like a map or a chart, a visualization of which students mentoring, mentoring programs are at which of our schools and which of our schools still need partners. And we are working on that right now. It's the um message that I've received on that. Thank you.
And that's it?
That's it.
Awesome, thank you. All right, with that being, oh, did you have something, Dr. Bedell? Oh, okay. Um with that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Buckner to talk um about some, some stuff.
All right. All right, so I am going to um walk us through um a, a community, I'm sorry, Communications and Community Engagement Committee recommendation. Um before I do that, I just want to lay out some um strategies from uh the mandate that was established um from the committee prior before me. Um uh and you shall have the handout. from the committee prior before me, and you shall have the handout. One of the strategies is to ensure we have systemic and continuous public engagement to gather input related to decision-making about the school district. The second one is to deepen and strengthen board relationships with stakeholders. And the third one is to ensure accurate information regarding KCPS board, district and schools is readily available and easily accessible to stakeholders. So, that is the grounding that we discuss every committee meeting. And so, with that, with those strategies in mind, one of the recommendations that this committee has is to have the board, is to have board, to have board representation at every DAC meeting beginning Wednesday, September fifteenth. This is an additional opportunity for the board to hear feedback, gain perspective and to gain additional data points. This is also an opportunity to share key information with stakeholders. This looks like one board member committing to attend at least one meeting throughout this year and sharing key takeaways during the ad hoc report. And so, just some, some quick bullet points, this would be, I'm sorry, let me get my thoughts together. The contribution to DAC meetings would involve five to ten minutes of speaking time. They would share upcoming bullet points from board meetings or agenda items to highlight. There would be a reference to concerns or a call to action and this input would be given by all board members. And then, also, it would be include contact information and an invitation to board and committee meetings. What we would gain is, you know, of course, an opportunity to be visible and to, to build relationships and to gain perspectives, to inform decisions and then, you know, just ensuring that we are well-informed, a well-informed board. And so, the DAC meetings have been identified this year, September fifteenth, November seventeenth, January nineteenth, March sixteenth and May eighteenth. These are held on the third Wednesday of each month, beginning at six P.M. So, with that, I would love to open it up for discussion. I think I have, you know, we have consensus amongst the committee members, which will be Dr. Jones and Mr. Hogan, and so, I would love to hear from the rest of you all.
Ms. Woolsey.
I love this idea and here's the reason why. I don't think it got passed, not this probably. We used to assign a board member to be the DAC liaison for the year and somehow that we didn't do that this year, and so, I, I'm a big believer in having the board attend because I think it, like you demonstrated here, it creates a relationship. It, just like you use these strategies to kind of seat yourself when you're meeting, the, the DAC, you know, its purpose, its stated purpose is to advise the administration and us as the board. So, I can't think of a better way to do that than to be present there. My one thought is that when we did this before, the reason we assigned someone, it doesn't mean that that's the only way to do it, is that then there was somebody really responsible for bringing back stuff from the DAC and so, I would want to make sure that if we do assign ourselves to this, that we, we do hold ourselves accountable for bringing anything we hear there back and, and then take something back to them as well. But I support this recommendation.
Ms. Ford.
Yeah, it makes sense to me too, but I just wanted to know if the community, the committee had discussed it being one person or would it be a rotation so we all have access and visibility?
Yes, absolutely, it would be a rotation. So, one thing that I'm proposing that we do now is just sign up for one of those days, even if that means we have to double up on one of those meetings.
I'll take January nineteenth.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Yeah, go ahead.
It doesn't mean though that, because I attend all the DAC, it still means we can all attend the DAC meetings. And June, I'm looking at you mainly because that doesn't have to be noticed because we're not meeting, but, okay.
Any, any dates stand out for you, Ms. Ford or Dr. Jones? November for Dr. Jones? March for Ms. Ford? Ms. Woolsey, you're going to all of them?
I was just gonna say I can commit to December, September fifteenth.
I tend to go to everyone, I try to. You took the nineteenth, but that is the legislative session kicks off, so I kind of would like to take that one if possible.
Yeah, that's fine with me, I don't, I don't care. May eighteenth, I don't, are they always on Wednesdays? Okay, so then, as long as May eighteenth isn't a board meeting night, but do they ever meet on board meeting nights? Okay. Then, then I'll take, yes, I'll be in town. I'll, I'll take the May eighteenth date, June. Mr. Abarkah, do you have a preference?
I think I'm, I'm missing where the dates are, tell me again.
Oh, I'm sorry, June is sending those to you. You can, you and Ms. Cortez can get back to June with some dates if that makes sense.
I'll sit.
Okay, Ms. Cortez gave us a thumbs up, so.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So, she's good. Okay. Anything else?
Nope, thank you.
Thank you for your work on that committee. More to come, by the way, for, for the board from the committee and Dr. Bedell, from your team as well, so we'll get more out to you when, when, when Ms. Buckner's ready. Okay, all right, well, with that being said, that was board member voice, so we'll move into, Dr. Bedell, the regular business item.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The item that we're asking the board to take action on is the approval of the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two collective bargaining agreement with KCFT and SRP. I want to make sure everybody understands this is for the AFT classified agreement. Administration requests the approval of the three-year agreement with KCFT and SRP for the classified personnel units in this collective bargaining agreement. Administration and AFT worked collaboratively to reach a mutually beneficial agreement that addresses many working condition and compensation matters. The cost of a step on the attached salary schedules and improvements to them is estimated at one-point-seven million and is available in the operating budget for twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two.
All right, any questions? Mr. Abarkah, I think, did you raise your hand?
Yeah, sorry, I said I'd included the chat and I failed at that. I, I just want to commend Dr. Bedell, his team, AFT and all who worked on, on this agreement. It is going to do tremendous things by increasing the pay for some of our employees and encourage us to continue to strive for a complete staff that's over fifteen dollars as a minimum wage, minimal livable wage. So, thank you all for the efforts.
Thank you, sir. All right, doesn't look like we have any other questions. So, is there a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the collective bargaining agreement for AFT classified personnel?
It's been moved.
It's been moved and seconded. June, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Abarkah?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Scroll down. Ms. Woolsey?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes, the motion passes. All right, well, with that, we'll go to our final item, which is a review of action items from tonight. June?
Okay. Okay, I handwrote these.
I have you flying here, sorry.
I have three different screens going. Okay, Ms. Buckner asked for demographics on the teachers of color and specifically how many teachers of color were retained, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Woolsey has asked for data on the percentage of new teachers by school and she means new by profession. Thank you. Ms. Buckner asked again for how teachers, how teachers are doing in the buildings and what are their, what is their performance on the rubric? She'd like a, like a graph, is that correct? Could you kind of restate that, sorry?
Yes, I, I'm really looking for our teacher performance or their effectiveness by building as a, as a whole. Like where, how many, the percentage of teachers that are in the developing or whatever.
Very good, thank you. All right, I'm not done yet. Ms. Cortez asked about internal audit functions or back checks, back checks, pardon me, do we have to provide for the audit, especially, I think we were discussing the audit on September twenty-sixth. Does that correct you, Ms. Cortez?
Yeah, that was actually more commentary than a request.
Okay.
So, there's no request there.
Super. Did you have a request on the percentage of faculty versus staff vaccination rate and how it breaks down?
So, I think, I think Ms. Williams addressed that question, which is that as they obtain additional data, they're going to provide it to us in, you know, in, in a, more than an aggregate.
Okay.
So, I, I will wait until we get the updated version and then, if I have further questions, I will pose them at a later time.
Thank you. And then, the last one, Ms. Buckner wants to see a plan, pretty much a contingency planning model. What is going to happen if we have over ten percent students are faculty? What does that model look like? Just like we used to have?
Yes.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Okay, Dr. Bedell, give it over to you for a review of the next board meeting.
All right, Mr. Chair, we have two items of action that we will approach the board with next meeting. AT&amp;T Corp., First Amendment, Third Renewal for four-hundred-twenty-four-thousand-three-hundred-sixty-four dollars and Cornerstones of Care for seven-hundred-thousand dollars.
All right, sounds good. Are there any other questions? All right, we're good, we're adjourned. Thank you, guys.
All right.